Allow me to be completely discreet, please.
Father, we just thank you for the wonderful day that you give us. We thank you for everything that you do for us and in our lives. It's all I appreciate it. We hope that everything we do tonight will be included into your eyes and we did it in a satisfactory way. We just pray that you give the people when they leave your United States journey, we pray that you'll watch over our town in Maryville and keep people safe. And I pray all this name from the kitchen.
Please go on to the president's place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Now, upon the end of amendments to the agenda. Now, I hear a motion for approval of amendments presented for the regular meeting on June 8th, 2015.
I'm making a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of a financial statement as presented for June 2015, I hear a motion for that.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor? Under mayor's commission, Ms. Lili Hall will be leaving Wednesday afternoon. She has turned in her resignation. It went out for notification that we've accepted applications last week and we'll attempt them up to Friday but this week. Then after that, we'll sit down and call the ones in and we're going to interview the Phil Hurd physician. He's clerk here at the Town Maryville. The biz on the left station on Mel Johnson will be postponed until July 29th, 10:00 AM. That's sewer pump station number one. Town council presence is not required, but if you want to come up here on July 29th, 10:00 AM, you're welcome. There's a movie for this month is Chronicles, no, July 18th, 7:03 AM at the Jack Bagel Pavilion. And one more thing, too, we'll be starting up in a few more weeks and two buses will be running and children will be out on the streets. So, I'll have to tell you, we got to watch out for them. Now, under our old business, I have a biz for inoperable Bush Hall. I'm fixing to open up a biz on that. You say all that, I think about it.
On that opening of a biz on that turf, have you got a minimum? We're not back to the biz. But we did have one more time that I think is an offer late on a Tuesday. We have one thing that had a hundred dollar bid, an operational bid for you.
I guess they won't even open these up, they got Scott State here from any of them. Mr. Rivers Smith submitted a bid to Bush Hall, the Town Maryville, and bid is seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. And so, I'll give the address and I'll to Ms. Jennifer here and she can call him at her convenience. Seventy-six dollars and fifty cents on the old Bush Hall.
That's all the bid you got?
Got two bids.
Oh, okay. The other one was lower, okay.
Yes, now, that's the high one.
Never know what you might get.
And that's Mrs. Johnson, I want to tell you for.
She got much more red.
Well, Townie Hall was out there. Okay. Under our new business, under number one, we have a public bid for tree removal at Mudcar. I had had a proposal from Bobby Palmer, which is a logger, Maryville area. I could not award it just to him without going out for public bids. Okay, I hear a motion to set up that bid on Bush Hall.
What's your name?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I just couldn't award that to him to do that, that has to do with his. Y'all can see where he's cleaned up already over one night, his crew has.
What was the purpose of cleaning up?
I don't know, I never found out. I don't know that belongs to the logger that I said, Cameron Parish. I don't know what the bid was. I thought they put a motel down over it.
Now, one thing I'd like to mention about that there. Of course, a lot of times, it was a lapse since then, but Mr. Mudd told us whenever he gave us the land and if we needed to clear things, he had plenty of equipment, he had taken care of it, you know, free of charge, which, you know, again.
There won't be a charge on this.
All the work was, no. They just didn't.
Now, he was going to pay, I think, do you remember what it was?
It was like a dollar bill.
Dollar payment? And he tipped it up. And there's another law over there, you know, the sale of a law, that money comes back to town, too.
Okay, well, he'll get them done.
So, I have a motion to advertise up a bid for tree removal at Mudcar.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Former Mr. John Lydon, CPA, director of the Town Maryville, first of years, July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. Have a motion?
Make the motion.
Thank you.
All in favor? This is number three, there, y'all have that in your package there. It's holiday vacation six time, first of year, July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. Any discussion on that?
I'd like a motion, would you step in?
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed, thank you. Town council lead, first of year, July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. Any discussion on that? I have a motion. I have a second, all in favor? Next was Maryville Police Department, Mr. Jim Brown is a reservist for the Maryville Police Department, Brock Thompson.
We need somebody here in Maryville, in the town of Maryville, instead of the Ritter's thing or somewhere else like that. Something that wants to go down and I need some backup real quick, Mr. Brown is right there. He's got all kinds of experience as a police officer and I think he's pretty well polished here. And he would be a great help to me, like I said, if I need some help in the middle. He has went and paid for his physical out of his own pocket, just let everybody know that he is capable of doing the justice.
Will, I make the motion, would you step in?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jim Brown, you're Maryville Town Attorney.
Thank you.
I would stick to a set of resolutions, safeguard parish jury, request assistance, clean out ditch of Tyler and Bryant Street. What that is, that ditch there, in front of First Baptist Church, on the northeast side to the southwest side. By the track, there's a track there.
We'll get a little cave in right there, too.
Well, we've worked on that bridge over there, of course, so I haven't looked at it lightly, but it's just a couple of makes and constant barriers of concrete and some lowers with that and they're kind of keep that washed out.
I'd like a motion, would you step in here?
I'm second.
Vote for the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed, thank you. Next was Mr. Jesse Hilli for mobile home modifications. That's somebody who has that picture of it. Has everybody down there looked at it? Mr. Jackson?
I've looked at it, that's thirty years old. Understand the family may be in need, but we do have a housing area where people could go to. We accept something like that, I feel like we'd have, just go ahead and accept just about anything. And that looks like a pretty well worn out name.
She didn't have a home, did she? I've got two little kids, nobody else.
Any more discussion? Do I have a motion on this?
I'm working on it.
All in favor?
You accepted, Mr. Redd?
Allison, I understand you will accept the date.
Maybe he gonna make it tight or something.
Try not to make it tight. I mean, I feel bad for her, she just lost her house, but I also understand the applicants waiting to take it as well.
Yeah. Well, we're just going to vote it out again.
She's not even here for us to talk to.
Instead of the other Linda and Samuels.
Well, I only tell you my thought here.
Yeah, it's probably we had an act in that corner.
That's the ninety years old.
We accept something like that there, we love the neighborhood, value property, value, everything else.
You've been waiting for it to break stuff in. Been partying and things. I kind of wish she'd been here far enough to drive. Thought she's supposed to be here.
The neighbors, according to that side, well, they didn't, he didn't have, so they're here, they have the. Is she on the land?
It's her taxes.
Oh, this is other thing for for San Julian, say, I'm back to this.
Y'all, y'all.
Well, the way I think, any door change. We've got some old trailers already in town, spending years around, but I don't think we can accept anything.
I don't have something that already has been certain here, while it's here. And that's thirty nine years old. We accept this, so I guess we're going to accept it. I'm not, you know, rewrap the fog.
I had to go from my own.
Thirty nine years old.
Bring you new trailer. I had to own my own.
Yeah, she's on her daddy's property.
See, that's right.
But they wouldn't, they're probably young and trying to want it for her property. These are stipulations to have a trailer, but I'm above before the town council. Because I see people put trailers in all the time, I don't see them.
If they call, they're told to bring things.
You can't put a trailer in this area anywhere, and you doubt it.
So, if they don't call, then you don't know when they put their trailer in.
But then they have to have permits. Because when I went out, when I was ten years ago, I went there showing proof that I own my property. I had to go get a 911 permit, which come back to the town, they have to get something from the Town of Maryville to go back to 911 to get something out there.
You should have to move that, that.
You know, the only people that are logically able to move trailers with our deal that we got written is that the trailer is already in the town before the, in effect, they're able to move it around. And which is almost sad, but that's the way we got it written. But we got a trailer thirty nine years old, that's a little. I think either look at the pictures, see. And if the people are needing a home to stay, they got housing over there, they continue to got vacation there. It would be all better living conditions.
Nobody here seeing anybody.
But you got to take into consideration the neighbors that you make, and they're also, what is it doing to their property? Is it free?
Yeah, it's worth making a hard decision.
I got two names, one yea.
Well, I really, because they are distant kin and I don't want to say just yes, because I know how I feel if somebody moves right up under me. I mean, there's pros and cons to it, I can understand that, but I've never read the laws for what y'all do for trailers, you know. I know y'all have wrote up stuff.
I'd like to see, you're the artist for it. I'd like to see.
I say now, she's not here for this, we would.
Okay, three names, three names. Do I have a name? You got her name?
Before you, are you voting for you of state?
Uh.
Are you voting for you of state?
Well, no, I'll vote, I'm here, I'm of state, I didn't come up here to say I'm of state. But it is a touchy situation.
Yeah.
It is, and I know now where it's going to be at. It gets way back in there, leading goes, he used to have a place down in there, didn't you? Long years ago, when she was the top, I believe she.
City of City Boys.
I believe she lived there, she probably dead. So, I don't know what's off in there, I know Samuels is, and I thought that it looked like it has back in there for a long year. It is.
Now, they've got one further on back in the woods, where you make that dirt.
It's just right on the back.
Go straight down that road.
Oh, okay.
There's two of them back there, one good way back in the woods.
Like way back to the woods, yeah.
Yeah, we can go.
Yeah, if it rains, you won't go down it.
How you vote, Ms. Jackson?
Well, since she's at home with us and where it's at, and the neighbors don't complain or they have anything to say about it, they should be up here. Because it was set out, we was going to vote on it. Yeah, so I don't know, you know, it is a touchy situation, but I would say yes, since it's going to be where it's at. I don't think nobody would object, but I don't know.
We have one yes, three nays, so we'll vote, yeah.
How would you vote, Sharon?
Have a motion?
I accept, I'm not, I accept the motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Vote again, or you already got that? Okay. Now, moving on to number eight, Mr. Carroll, Carl Samuel, Land and Alleyway located in industry. I don't know if we're talking on this or Mr. Samuel's talking on this. Mr. Samuel, go get out the floor.
Okay. I'm trying to leave and believe that that's possible. Excuse me, sir. I have a few notes here, so maybe that's the problem. Figure me, follow. So, I just want you to see what you're recording and talking about. Okay, here's my problem that I'm having here, when I purchased this property about a month ago, the address of the property was 716 Henry Street. That's the address of the property and that's where your 911 address, anytime you need to contact, that's the address, that's what they got unfiled in, at the, in the river, the address of the property. But there was a trailer blocking access to the property. Like when people come turn the lights on and they had to call me and I had to tell them, well, they said, the people who were maintaining that property, they cut a trailer through Fifth Street. And so, you had to go into Fifth Street. So, I contacted the mayor about it and said, well, you need to go to the river and talk it over. And so, that's what I did, I went over to the river and they, say, well, the only thing they did was had a council meeting on it. They put it on the general, and council meeting. But they didn't vote on it, they just said it wasn't signed and nothing. They, they just said it was in the council meeting, they, they talked about it, but it's nothing on the record. They're saying that that the alleyway has been closed, but this is a trailer sitting on the block in the middle. I think if everybody called me to do work, I'm trying to renovate the place. I got to tell them to go out and do it, if not that ready, that 911 to that property. And I'm just trying to be a good citizen here, I want to be fixed. I mean, they say, well, I can go around the Fifth Street, but if you go around the Fifth Street, it's a half a mile and I'm going to have to build a road up in there. And I don't mind trying to do it, but according to this survey, Fifth Street, there's an access. I mean, do the city mind taking that access over? They don't, so that block that they come up on Henry Street, that people that would go up to the house, that's what they, the people previous on it had put that themselves? Oh, okay.
One thing I can say about that, we'd have to check back with records, while we're here, Charles here. A lot of these alleyways, half the alleyway is that people wanted it, he turned over the property on one side and half on the other side. I don't know that that there is a case here, because it had to be researched with all the ones that be turned over. Which, in that particular case, it could possibly mean whatever part of trailers on, maybe I showed their property. If I were part of it that was awarded to them, I don't know, I have to research the, yeah.
Well, I'm not a bad. I'm not a bad person, I don't seen the trailer and I got the survey, part of the trailer is on my property, but, I mean, I'm not, I don't want, hey, I want to be a good neighbor. If you going to raise hand over ten or four of feet, I don't think you'll be a good neighbor. But I didn't say nothing about that, but this is, is hindering me from progress in here. My sewer and water, we got a sewer tract right over there on Henry Street, that's about maybe 400 feet from the, from the house. So, why should I have to run a sewer about 2,000, 1,500 feet when I can run one 400 feet?
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Are you in the process of getting ready to do something over there?
Yes, my, my daughter's going to live there, they, they, I'm working on a now. But everybody calling me trying to find out how to get to the place, because there's, you got a travel trailer sitting in front of your driveway. And I called the river, say, well, hey, ain't that nigger saying that he got no alleyway code there?
Oh, would not send somebody out there, just to ask questions? Or we just need to dig into records?
Do you have a 911 address on your post?
Yes, it's selling, it's Henry Street.
I, we, I had that over and I thought, we talked about this, but I'll check, know that, check on it, it's been a while. But I think there was a discussion on it, I don't know if it was last year or this year, but they should have gave you company, but I'll check into it.
Yes. All I know of this thing was that the deed, nowhere was well, 2013. And I'm sure that's a voter, though.
What the, what the town process trying to do, I think, was instead of them having to maintain alleyways, they were dividing it to the property owners on both sides, give to them, I'm not sure this is one of them. They wanted to do that over on mine, straight from front line, give it, give it to me, have it outside, I said, no, I don't want that. I'd rather keep it like this, if I ever got holes or ruts out there, that people going to have to sit and doing that, do something about it. But some people jumped right on it, I hope I made one of the cases there, but it's going to have to be looked at.
Oh, I'm going to say here, I'm sure that's a voter, though.
Yeah, if, if it was, it's a voter.
You know, because there's a fence, probably is out there over there now.
I think if it was voted on.
Do what?
If it would, if it would vote wrong, it would be on the video.
I'm just not sure of all the particular properties.
It's a travel trailer, is it banned, is it on there?
Well, I think it belonged to Mr. Upchurch, I mean, that's what I've been told.
Right.
I mean, according to that, there he the one that. Yeah, y'all voted, they let it closed or whatever. But like I say, the river, they saying they don't have, don't have no record on it, it's nothing that the road is closed.
Well, it came back over here, Mr. Anna Upchurch came in here and back to work. Ms. Jennifer, this correct, Miss Anna Upchurch came in here with paperwork, you put the seal on it. Mr. Carroll came down here, he signed the paperwork and she took the paperwork back to the river.
I, I think that was on the thirty, I went over there on the thirty and the lady said, the lady had come over here, over there on the 29th, that money, say the paperwork wasn't right, so she sent it back. I don't know what, she just said it wasn't right, but I can only imagine though, if whoever signed it, I mean, if they not the mayor, I don't think it, but I'm not attorney, but I don't see how it can be legal. I'm talking about if somebody else signed it other than you, because you were the mayor when I bought the place. And my issue is, as of the day that I bought, I don't know what happened a year from now. I just want to know what's happened in the last month that I own.
How long have you owned it? How, how long have you owned it?
About a month, I just bought. That's why all this stuff is surfacing about it, because I've been going back and forth to the river and they saying, well, we ain't got no record on there. And then if whoever signed, if he ain't the current mayor, I mean, is it legit for somebody, for the mayor, a year and a half or so, or two years?
I can answer for what happened on this date right here with Mr. Samuel.
I can.
But all I know is, Ms. Jennifer puts the town seal on the paperwork, Mr. Carroll came down there and signed up on it. And you, you had quoted the lady that you bought it side unseen.
Well, I didn't buy it side unseen, but I bought it as is, but I still wanted everything to be. If it, if I'm entitled to what I want, I mean, if I bought it at 707,016 Henry Street, I think that's the dread. If you look up on 911, send a fire truck over there, they come in the Henry Street. And there's a, a travel trailer blocking Henry Street.
I was under the impression.
The log in Industry or the alley of Industry?
Well, I'm not from, all I know is right after you cross the railroad track, they got a sign saying Henry Street to the right. And the address on the house is Henry Street. And on my D, I got a copy. And on my D, I got a copy of my warranty D where I bought it here, it says seven thousand sixteen Hemis Street. That's the address that I bought the house on.
And the, the legal description is what's going to.
And the legal.
The legal description is what's gonna matter.
Yes.
Any kind of deed. So basically, this is gonna be the north of, especially two thousand town, should nine west or something of that nature. Uh, this specifically is designated as blocks one, two, three, block, block eight, and lots six, seven, nine of southwest Maryville. So your legal description is gonna trump any kind of municipal address. You got municipal address of one, two, three, Joe Schmo Road, and that's not, uh, indicative of your actual address. That's, that's not legal. Uh, your legal description, which you would go and you'd pull the plaque of Maryville, uh, or southwest of Maryville, and that's what's gonna be the actual property that you purchased. The fact that you have access to Fifth Avenue doesn't mean that, I mean, that, that guarantees your access. It's not, even if the, the town did not, uh, say the town would have about abandoned this alleyway, then you still have access through Fifth Avenue. Uh, I don't know if they filed the paperwork or not, because I haven't been able to look and see. So I'm, I'm just gonna look off of what you have and what I'm guessing the accessories office told you. So I don't know what's in the record and what is not. So they could have it in the, the accessories office may not have that in their records. Uh, that's a possibility. I just don't know right now.
Okay, again, I don't know. I'm here trying to find out. And again, back to, uh, I want to be a good neighbor now. If I can go up to, uh, Fifth Street, that's what I'm saying. If they would just put me some rock, I don't have a bulldozer come over and kinda made me a road, but when it rain, you still can't get in there. When it raining, I have a daughter and a grandson that's gonna be living there. I don't wanna get a call and jester at six o'clock in the morning saying, Dad, I'm over here in a ditch. I mean, if you could just put me some rock, just put, we can squash this right now. Just put me, put me some rock on the road so she can get in and out of there. That's all. I'm just trying to be a good neighbor. Just squash the rock. I don't wanna, you, you got the, I'm playing the league of here one day. But right now, I have a daughter and a grandson that does. And I want to do that for their best thing.
But that was never designated as a street over there, and that's private property. And the town cannot be putting rock on private property.
Okay, according to this here, the map that I got, I don't know, maybe y'all have something there. The one that I showed you say Fifth Street is, so you saying y'all maintain that alleyway?
Not the alleyway, that's right away you have, that you had made in there. I saw the dog, I've been over there. I saw the dog. Maybe you've been over there before.
Yeah, I know. And you know about, it, it, when it rains, ain't no way she can get in and out of there. When it, if it were, the solution was to open up Hemis Street the way it was. I don't know. Well, I guess they did it when the place went up for sale. That's when they closed it, but if, if somebody was living there, wouldn't have waited that shit to happen.
I don't know when it, whatever, later. I don't, I don't have the records on that. I don't know. All I know is, uh, will keep you the property.
Okay, now, this other councilman over here, he was saying something about, now, what was that you were saying? That you didn't wanna give up the right because you didn't wanna, you wanted the city to fix it if it in a cutoch or something. Were you talking?
Well, the excess of my house, it is a street. And, and, you know, but from my house on forward, it ends up being a road that they never built the rest of the way go across railroad track on, uh, Brian Street and everything. And so, you know, really, it, uh, and I mow it all the time. The city don't do nothing for it. But if I had something go wrong, there, and I'd expect, you know, if it presented a problem getting in and out of my property. But, uh, they maintained my road because it is a road, not an alleyway, okay? The alleyways is where the city tried to eliminate a bunch of the alleyways because they were serving on purpose. I guess years ago, it might have been a matter of a trash truck going in, running or picking up or nothing, what, I don't know. But they were real narrow, okay? And so when it came up, all that sort of stuff, it was part of the alleyway on one side, right split right down the middle. Part of it would go to people that own property on the left hand side, part of it would go to people on the right hand side, if they wanted it that way.
Okay, what's the difference between an alleyway and a street? Can I get the clarification on that?
It's sort of different. Uh, alleyway is an alleyway, something that's not used for traffic going up and down, as a general rule, okay? It wouldn't be a matter of, uh, I don't think, uh, dump trucks going up, I mean, excess to the property or whatever, you know. Uh, may, may, maybe for a fact, it might make all these electric companies repair it or something else beyond that. You know? We just recently voted on an alleyway over, for the people that lived down at the end. People were using the old wethers cutting up and down that alleyway and causing all kinds of commotion and things. We ended up voting on that, that was also down. There's, there is, uh, some civil problems there, it happened quite.
Okay, well, I'm gonna take up a bit more of your time, but, well, if I can't get any help on this here new exit, which I think is really a road, then I'm gonna have to see what can be done about this here. I mean, because according to the river, they saying, and nine one one, everybody saying, I got in Hemis Street. But it's a travel trailer sitting over there. And, and, and can't nobody tell me nothing about it?
Hemis Street, it's Allen's Hemis Street.
Yeah, well, we got on this map that you brought us here, it says Alley Hemis Street.
It's on the street. It blocks it. I can't get to, on here.
Just here, Matt, just to give us, it's saying Alley Hemis Street.
So it's saying that travel trailer is sitting right here.
Come, you, somebody's showing what that trailer said.
I got this from the river today.
From your Hemis Street, rather, Alley Hemis Street.
That's to that trailer block. Now, this is my, that trailer sits right there.
Which is property.
So it's across the street or?
It's blocked. It sits right in there. I can't get to it. And there's my house sitting right there.
That's the only access way to get you out?
Well, if you come down this way, but I would have to run sewer or a box or.
See, on my.
Thirteen hundred feet, or can I just come right here? They got a sewer right there. I can go about four hundred feet.
Where it's in Alley Hemis Street. My house, I have one access to it. I can run around behind my house and run around the road, right? But there's no road there. If I wanted to take a shortcut to go out or something other there, still, you know, I'd be having to make my own road. So I've only got one access going to my house in Brian Street.
Where the, if they go through with this here, that's all I have is one access. And, and where they got it, nothing. Like I said, if it rains, they can't, you can't get in and out of there.
They can't get in on Fifth Street?
No, when it rains, you can't.
Now, you're talking about on your property.
Yeah.
Okay, well, see, we're, Fifth Street, we maintain Fifth Street, okay? But when it gets over to, uh, your property.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about Fifth Streets here, right, right up there. Fifth Street runs right up to there. Fifth Street runs where y'all wanna go at, uh, Hemis Street. Hemis Street runs into Fifth Street.
Okay, that's your part, right there, you said, was blocked?
Yeah, that was.
This part right here.
No, that's not it. That's where. This here.
Have you talked to him?
You talked to him, Mr.? No, I haven't talked to him.
So this is maintained road?
Yes.
So you can get down there, you just can't get, if it rains, you can't get.
I can't get out of it. I can't, you may have to procure that. I mean, it don't say it. I mean, this is me talking with, jumping over. Just going there to take a look for you. And you could just, just, just walk across, go for Hemis, but you see where the train is. And right there, that's where they have my sewer there.
But the alley, okay, alley, that's where alley. That's an alleyway from right there. It's all the way across there, that's an alleyway. And that's where they're gonna have to look into records and see some of the, that might divide it that alley stuff. That is an alleyway. And the whole purpose of them providing that was to take some of the string off of the town. Okay, the way to the, 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 all that term. It was a good idea or not. You know, if they, if they got to a certain degree, they, they should have known the city, they created laws, still.
Okay, well, this Fifth Street, it belongs to the city. This creates a problem for me getting there now. Even though I don't put a road to there, it's still, when it rains, you can't.
So it's over ground here, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is good.
They, when the riggers used to live back there, they maintained their own though. They took care of their.
No, it's, it's not a road. It's not a street. It's not a street.
Yeah. They, they took care of their own, by the way. I do know that for a fact. But did they come in through Hemis Street? They came down right through Hemis Street. Yeah, see, Hemis Street, yeah, I can maintain that because I'm, you can see my house from Hemis Street. You can't see. But that, the other road you talk about? Yeah. Dogs used to live on that little section. It just went straight to that house and that's as far as that road went to. Yeah, yeah. Go first. You're right. And then we took a bulldozer in there, but when it rain, you can't get in there with a four wheel drive. And I got a daughter and a grandson that be living there. I mean, and that is Fifth Street. It, it belongs to the city. Our parents, they think it does.
I would say that road belongs to you.
You saying Fifth Street belonged to me?
No, 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 no. Over there where that road, that alley, road gear put in there.
That's all Fifth Streets here. If you look at this map, Fifth Street goes all the way up to Hemis Street where you closing.
Goes all the way up to the alley?
Yeah, to that alley, Hemis Street, that's what they closing. If they left that open, there my house right there. But Fifth Street, that's still Fifth Street, even though I don't put a bulldozer in there. But that's still belong to the city. I had to get in there. But now I still think if it rains, I can't get in there.
What, the grass or?
It's all, it's mud. It's mud. It's just a, a dead road.
A place that don't look or something.
Well, you, I don't think you can do it four wheel drive.
I have a question. Is your grandson school age?
Uh, yes, he is. He's thirteen years old.
How is the school bus supposed to get down if it raining?
Well, the school? That's a good question. I don't even know where I'm gonna put a mail box. I'm leaving it seven thousand sixteen Hemis Street, but I don't know what I'm, what they gonna pick my trash up. I don't know any of that.
I thought that a school bus access had to be maintained.
Have y'all, have y'all researched the alleyway as far as city records? Not parish, but for the town?
If you go look on our maps on the lawn, there is no.
So that alley has been abandoned or not?
It was abandoned in two thousand thirteen. The only thing I can think of is maybe Mr. Carroll took the paperwork to the sales, or the property tax office instead of to the courthouse.
Can I make a suggestion until we find out?
Do what?
Let, do a little bit of research into this and find out for sure. You know, and table this until, till y'all can find out.
So with that, unfortunately, we might have to do some research.
Well.
Where under the sun?
Yes and no.
Is there a house or a blackbird?
If you look, right there. So I've been through there before. When I make the turn, I don't even pay attention with it. Because they have a problem with that driver right there.
Trying to get down in that driveway with the alley truck, truck that house was acting a little bit there. And, and you have that little trailer there.
Yeah, they're just getting mad about the people.
I didn't think it was driving, because it disturbed, you know, you look at that truck.
Say what I'll, do the research and give you that right there.
Well, um, table it all, so we can get research on it.
I'm the black guy. Just leave one with you.
I have motion table it.
Thank you very much.
Now we're having a public demonstration. This here car, the dog got outside. Go ahead, try out.
What can we do about the dogs barking and we can't go in our backyard in the summertime because of the dog smell? What can be done about that? I called SPCA, they never come out. Now we've got new neighbors with more dogs and they bark all the time.
I'm in the same boat.
Are there exactly the noise or coordinates that cover that?
So what can we do about that?
I'll have to bring back this vice dog too, or care. Are they in bits here or they chained? I did care.
I might get a dog kennel and some chain.
I mean, I mean, dogs.
Backyard.
I mean, dogs is.
There's two over there at that trailer and Chuck had about five of them and he never cleans that dog.
That's another thing that this move in the tree. Behind me on that tree, I forgot what this tree is. What is that tree? Behind me, Tyler, what is this tree in front of you?
That's Third Street.
Third Street, that's where it's at.
It's a tree moved in there on Lawrence. I don't know who he is. But he got some barking dogs, dog, it's crazy. Every time I go out, my dog, they don't hate me. My dog won't go out, you know. But they were taking, they were for you, they, they are. Didn't they have, I've been inside, I've been on these dogs, I hear, but going to and going, they just talking. I thought they were coming, every this place is coming in.
Their dogs. They were barking, something in the yard.
But they barked all day.
Probably the dogs, they're not that real. But they're so close, they're crying, they won't do their.
I'm in the back house, rattling the windows.
I think if you burn trash in the city, when you've got a garbage can.
They've got forty-five bag for trash. They can dump all the.
Ooh, that's the worst.
Mayor of police.
But if you have regular trash, because there's no way to burn the trash.
Yes, man.
And that's the trailer.
The dogs are all day long.
Matter of fact, when we're here, we're leaving right on the way to here.
It, it's just not good. It's not saying rats, worms, or like that.
Termites.
Any other participants?
I'd like to have something clarified. Maryville Police Department patrols the junction, Dorritter, and Singer. Why?
Patrols where?
The junction.
The junction.
Mm-hmm. Dorritter and Singer.
The only time they leave outside is if the police, if the Boyard Sheriff's Department calls for assistance.
Well, I've been told there's a Maryville police car that goes to Dorritter just about every day.
Well, we have a couple people living in the park that go home with a police car.
Uh, no, I, uh, he's the only one that has a vehicle to take home, but here recently we do, don't have a vehicle to do it in. The only time he does it is if I'm out of town, 'cause I got to get in touch with him, you got to get over. But right now, the only time they go to Dorritter is if they have somebody in custody. Gotta take papers up there to the courthouse, get them signed, warrants, and all this stuff. But as far as patrolling, they don't patrol unless they're getting called to assist.
That's at the junction and Singer?
That's Junction, Singer, and sometimes it has been to our bank card. 'Cause the sheriff's office is short people at times, they all off on vacations at the same time, somebody using their head. And, uh, they got the, they call, and we the ones next to it, so we call and respond to it. That's the only reason that goes down like that.
But the sheriff's department would have to call and them fight off.
Yeah, they call us on the radio.
Make up the...
Yeah.
Uh, I guess the sheriff's department, that's their responsibility.
'Cause I have seen times the sheriff's department didn't have two people on patrol all night.
Wow.
And if we need to try to assist, then that's supposed to be our bros and arms, so we don't, we need somebody, but we don't gonna help them, they don't help us.
Right.
And usually the deputy covers west side of Paris, you also gotta take into consideration the west side of Paris going all the way down, south of Starks on River.
That don't happen very often, I assume.
Uh, maybe two or three times a month at most.
Now, the last week I worked, I got called to assist with an accident on Bob Carson Road, and then I had to, I left there just as quick as I got called back over here, so...
But then y'all got a copy of the, uh, what y'all done in the month as far as tickets and things. I'm glad that, uh, y'all started putting that out, it gives us a little bit more insight, uh, to see what's...
Any other public participation?
And, uh, I catch up with all the old particular services that I've...
I'm president.
I'm proud of you. Proud of you.
Okay, Peyton's here.
This place might as well have a fake town. Belonging.